Yeah, yeah. But, um, yeah, she's at the house and, um...
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate y'all coming to this reschedule meeting from Tuesday to today, Thursday, January 11th. First item is a public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing regarding an ordinance amending Charleston County Code Article 4 of Chapter 19 Taxation to add an officer to the Board of Assessment Appeals.
No one here? Thank you. Next. Public comments?
Yes, sir.
Public comments?
No, we have one more public hearing, sorry.
Oh, one more public hearing, sorry.
Yes, sir. Notice is hereby given that Charleston County Council will hold a public hearing regarding a request to rezone the properties within the Ten Mile Community Historic District from Low Density Residential R4 and Urban Residential UR to Special Management S3.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, at the November 14th County Council meeting, council voted for staff to process a rezoning of the Low Density Residential R4 and Urban Residential UR zoned properties within the Ten Mile Community Historic District to the Special Management S3 zoning district.
Thanks.
The Ten Mile Community is located within the Allendale area of unincorporated Charleston County. The Ten Mile Community Historic District, which was adopted in June of 2022, includes 458 properties. The community is divided by the urban growth boundary, placing a portion within the urban suburban area of the county and another section within the rural area of the county. This map shows the Ten Mile Community Historic District. So, this map shows the current zoning within the urban suburban area of Ten Mile. The properties shown in yellow are zoned Low Density Residential R4 and total 320 parcels. There are also four properties shown in maroon, which are zoned UR Urban Residential. Properties where the aerial imagery is showing represent those that have been annexed into the town of Mount Pleasant. Prior to 2001, the subject properties were zoned Agricultural Residential and Agricultural General, but upon the adoption of the ZLDR in November of 2001, the subject properties were zoned Low Density Suburban Residential, RSL. The four properties currently zoned Urban Residential were rezoned from RSL to Moderate Density Suburban Residential, RSM, in 2003. RSM has subsequently become the UR zoning district, and RSL became the Low Density Residential R4 in 2006. The Ten Mile Community spans both sides of Highway 17 North and is bisected by the urban growth boundary. The subject parcels are bounded by the Copahy Sound to the south and Highway 17 North to the north and contain either residential uses or are undeveloped. Areas to the west in the county are zoned either R4 or MHS. Properties to the west in the town of Mount Pleasant are zoned PI2, PD, R3, or R1. Properties to the east are in the county and are zoned Ten Mile Business Service Node or PD80 Seaweed Preserve. So now, we'll talk more about what the current zoning in the urban suburban area of Ten Mile allows. This table shows the density, intensity, and dimensional standards for both the R4 and UR zoning districts. Maximum densities in these areas are four and 16 dwelling units per acre, respectively. You can also see that the minimum lot area in R4 with public water and sewer is 5,000 square feet and that there is no minimum lot area in UR. The R4 zoning district allows for 40% maximum impervious surface coverage, whereas the UR district allows for 50% coverage. Additionally, the maximum building height in R4 is 35 feet, but the maximum building height in UR is four stories or 50 feet, whichever is less. So, this table shows the allowed land uses in the R4 zoning district, starting with the by right allowed uses on the left, conditionally allowed uses in the center, and uses requiring special exception approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals on the right-hand side. This is the same table but for the UR zoning district. So now, we will talk a little bit more about that S3 zoning district. So here are the density, intensity, and dimensional standards for the S3 zoning district. They include a maximum density of three principal dwelling units per acre and a minimum lot area of 12,500 square feet with public water or sewer. The maximum impervious surface coverage is 40% of the lot, and the maximum building height is 35 feet. So here is the table of allowed uses for the S3 zoning district. So again, on the left-hand side are the by right allowed uses; in the center are the uses subject to conditions; and on the right-hand side are the uses requiring special exception approval. This slide shows a comparison between the current R4 and UR zoning density, intensity, and dimensional standards and those of the S3 zoning district. You can see that the S3 district has a lower density at three dwelling units per acre. The S3 district also has a considerably larger minimum lot area at 12,500 square feet. The minimum lot width in S3 is also larger at a minimum of 70 feet. Both districts have the same building height and maximum impervious surface coverage. This slide provides a comparison between some of the allowed land uses in the S3, R4, and UR zoning districts. Those marked with a C are allowed subject to conditions, and those marked with an S are allowed subject to special exception approval. Staff believes this zoning map amendment meets the approval criteria because it's consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Designation for these properties, which is urban suburban cultural community protection, which is described in the plan as, quote, "intended to protect and promote the culture and unique development patterns of existing communities and sustain their strong sense of community." Also, the proposed amendment is consistent with the residential density recommended for this future land use designation, which is one to four dwelling units per acre, and Section 3.1.7b of the Comprehensive Plan also states that zoning and land development regulations in these areas should be customized to meet the needs of the individual communities. Additionally, the proposed rezoning to the S3 zoning district would aid the Ten Mile Community in preserving its historic character through a larger minimum lot size and a lower maximum density than allowed in the existing zoning districts. The uses allowed in the S3 zoning district are compatible with the uses existing on surrounding properties, and the dimensional standards of the proposed zoning district are compatible with much of the development that exists already in the community. The proposed amendment would make the zoning of the Ten Mile Community consistent with the zoning of many other settlement communities in the urban suburban area. The proposed amendment also addresses events, trends, or facts that have significantly changed the character or condition of an area. The subject properties were zoned RSL, now R4, with the adoption of the ZLDR in 2001. In 2003, four of those properties were rezoned to the RSM, now UR, zoning district. Since that time, the growth in Charleston County and the town of Mount Pleasant has been exponential and spread outwards into areas that were once considered rural, such as the Ten Mile Community. Additionally, on October 26th of 2021, the R4 zoning district was amended to allow for a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, which was reduced from 7,250 square feet with public water or sewer, which created an opportunity for development on much smaller lots than were traditionally seen within the Ten Mile Community, which has an average lot size of 1.09 acres. As noted above, the proposed amendment would require a larger minimum lot size and lower maximum density to help the community retain its historic character. Since the approval criteria have been met, staff recommends approval. Additionally, at their December meeting, the Planning Commission also voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. So, 845 notification letters were sent out in advance of the December Planning Commission meeting. An additional 845 letters notifying the public hearing were also sent out. We also placed an ad in the Post and Courier for both of those meetings. And on December 18th, staff also posted 381 signs on the 324 subject properties. So we've received quite a bit of public input regarding this case. Prior to the Planning Commission meeting, one letter in support and a petition which stated, "I am signing in support of the proposed Ten Mile Historic District zoning overlay, and I understand the zoning regulation changes that will occur as a result," with 248 signatures was received. At the December Planning Commission meeting, the President of the Ten Mile Community Association spoke in support of the rezoning, and about 12 individuals stood in agreement. In advance of tonight's public hearing, we received an additional 25 letters in support and another petition with 16 signatures, which stated, "I support rezoning Ten Mile Historic Districts, R4, and UR properties to S3 to reduce the density of the historic district and help maintain the prevailing character of the community." So this map shows the properties that indicated they were in support of the rezoning in blue. The boundary of the historic district is in yellow, and the properties that are proposed for rezoning are shown with hatching. Please note that not all public input received included addresses. And lastly, here is the proposed rezoning schedule, and please note these dates do not account for any changes in council's calendar. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily.
We have one person signed up, Craig Askew.
Good afternoon, council members and staff. Good afternoon. My name is Craig Askew. I live at 987 Gadsdenville Road in the big town of Allendale right now. I support the rezoning Ten Mile Historic District R4 and UR properties to S3 to reduce the density of the historic district and to help maintain a prevailing character of the community I grew up in. I have over 100 years of lineage in that small community. My grandmother and great-grandparents on both sides of my family live in and around that community. They were laborers in and around Mount Pleasant, Sullivan's Island. The staff has acknowledged that the average lot size in the historic district is over an acre. The native residents of this community have not settled the land with such density, lot patterns, and lot sizes that allow to support R4 zoning. Over the past several years, an explosion of development has been approved to occur in Ten Mile and bring more people, more traffic, more deaths, increased erosion of roads, increased destruction of trees, increased displacement of wildlife, and contributing to unprecedented flooding. These are actual facts, guys. I live this and I see this. The flooding we had the other day and the storm is just unprecedented, unbearable. I don't know how people are going to get to their homes, especially in Ten Mile on Seafood Road. I mean, we've shown you guys pictures. We've demonstrated in words. We've demonstrated in pictures. We've demonstrated and community members coming here time after time after time again. It is not safe. It will continually erode. We have, you have proven here at the county that we cannot keep up. The expansion, and these small African-American settlement communities cannot keep up. We, you ask us to do area character praises, we do that. You ask us to do everything we ask us to do, we do those things. We can't keep moving the goalposts. The rapid growth is uncharacteristic in this area, and it's becoming increasingly, increasingly pressurized. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You have some people signed up for public comments, but that's it for the public hearing.
Okay. We will move into our council meeting.
We have four.
Oh. I thought you said we didn't have...
We have three people, three people for public comments. First person is Mike McShane, and then Viola Stokes and Michael German.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Administrator, council members. My name is Mike McShane, a resident of 1501 Ravens Point Road on Johns Island. I'm here tonight for two purposes. One, to prove to the administrator that I can wear street clothes and not just be in scrubs. I make no promise that this will always be the case. But also, I am here to represent the Johns Island Task Force, and I think you'll see going in the future that I'll represent for the primary purposes of the task force, be the spokesperson for that going forward. The task force appreciates the fact that public works, staff, and Planning Department worked on recommendations that came out of the task force regarding the BZA and tree component for public works. The fact that the council asked it to go back allowed the opportunity for the task force to participate, so I thank you for doing so, and appreciate the fact that both the Planning Department and the Public Works Department heard recommendations from the task force, including what you will see come out of Planning Commission, I'm sure, here soon, the fact that we have the ability to make some thoughts on terms of tree replacement, and asking for common sense. Too often, we see trees get replaced that go right into an area that has to then be impacted again either by utility or other means, so it becomes really a waste of money at that point. And that certainly trees are really one of the significant emblematic images of the Low Country, and so I think that's why you see such a passion for that, come out of that. So again, thank you very much for the ability to do that, and look forward to continuing to work with the staff and the council on future issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Viola Stokes, and then Michael German.
Good afternoon. I am Viola Small Stokes, the newly elected president of Snalden Community Civic Association. I'm excited and proud to be here tonight representing our beautiful little city of Snalden in Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, where I was raised. Snalden Community was built on a foundation of love, family, and support. I've attended a few of these meetings before in the past. I have met Mr. SASS at some of our community meetings, sharing information on our ongoing project, project, sorry, the sewer project. I know other community members who are in attendance tonight and who frequently attend these meetings representing Snalden. We will continue to be involved and in attendance, making sure our community are well-involved and informed and updated with changes. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to introduce myself to you guys, looking forward to continued communication and support from you and from us. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
And Mr. German.
Good evening and Happy New Year. I think the first thing I want to say is that the Snalden Community family stands with Ten Mile Community in their efforts to have their zoning changed from an R4 to an S3. We support their efforts in that matter, in that, with that issue. I'm here again this year, 2024, and I am very excited. I had a conversation with Mr. SASS, the chairman of County Council, and it looked like we're going to move forward with the Snalden Sewer Project. Digging is scheduled to start in April 2024. I surely hope that after the many, many years we've been here talking about this, that it actually gets done this year. And that's the latest information I have, we have, coming from Mr. SASS, and we're really look, we're excited, we're excited. It's been a long time coming. We hope that there's no more delays in getting this project started and completed. Now, we will have some other issues, but our main concern is right now, let's put the pipes in the ground. We have the money, let's start. Looking forward to working with you again this year and getting this project completed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir. In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Minutes of December 12 and December 21st and January 4th.
Move for approval.
Moved by Mr. Moody, seconded by Mr. Pryor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Third reading ordinances, Board of Assessment Appeals Ordinance Amendments, third reading.
An ordinance amending Charleston County Code Article 4, Chapter 19 Taxation to add an officer and other matters related thereto. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number four, second reading ordinances, traffic impact studies.
An ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance Number 1202, as amended, to allow the Public Works Director to waive the ZLDR Traffic Impact Study requirements on SCDOT rights of way at the following document locations, Chapter 9 Development Standards. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
No.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. SASS?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with eight ayes and one nay.
Item number five, consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Reverend Middleton, seconded by Mr. Werman, I believe, or was it?
I think it was all Moody and Middleton.
Okay, I'm sorry. Middleton and Moody, thank you all both. Thank you all both.
But will you to Werman, you know, for history?
Moved for all?
If he wants to be recorded, who knows?
Is moved to consider A through D?
Yes.
Any questions about them? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Just a comment. Just a comment. Thank you for this. Keep them coming. Appreciate you answering the bell.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number six, Human Resource Committee.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Reverend Middleton. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. No nays, all ayes. Thank you. Council comments? Reverend Milton?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Happy New Year to everyone. We look forward to working with each of you this year, and just thank you for the... Do you have something else?
No.
Oh, thank you very much for the fine way in which you're leading this council thus far this year. Thank you very much, and to Vice Chairwoman Honeycutt.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Darby?
Thank you, Mr. SASS. Every now and then, sir, I get into a contemplative mood and reflect on the past, and something just has dawned on me. Now, Mr. Pryor and I along Mr. Navnet came to County Council in terms of single-member district. It was such a measure to prevent single-member district from coming to existence, to the point that this council, and not that I'm picking on Mr. Scott, led the effort to prevent single-member district that it had to go to the United States Supreme Court to have single-member district here in Charleston County, the first time in this 300-some-odd years' history. And a lot of people think that we were going to use the possessive pronoun of "my district, my district, my district." That was not the case for the first, I guess, six to eight years. And come to find out, those who were against single-member districts, they were the ones who started preaching "my district, my district." And now it appears that if everybody now is saying "my district." And I hope that we, as a council, could grow that it's more than just "my district." When Mr. Pryor and I first got here, again, along Mr. Navnet, there were roads in Santee which had not been paved in 57 years. Had we just been concerned about our district, that road would have never gotten paved. The clean water on the islands, if we were just interested in our district. So I hope that this council going into the new year was to express a non-provincial collective effort for all, as we grow and mature politically as a group, as a body. That's what I envision. That's what I reflect. Let's get away from this possessive pronoun, just mine. I need to evince as much concern in Mr. Boykin's area as much as I do on Liberty Hill, and vice versa. We shouldn't pit PIT, North Charleston against West Ashley. Those days should be gone. So those are my remarks, sir. I just hope that we can work from a comprehensive perspective, and I forget one time, I think the administrator, he used a terminology which I don't recall, but there will be a change in my personality on council. I remember Chief Lucas one time said, "Mr. Darby, why are you using one of those slay hammers to kill a mosquito?" So I would do much better share the temper, my attitude, the temperament, and whatever case it would be, so that we can work together collectively. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kabrowski.
That's one of the things, exciting to hear that we're on the verge, I hope, of changing the density for the Ten Mile Community, and I appreciate the people that came out today and recognize the historical importance of that, and just like to emphasize that this is a real big deal, that as now, there can be multifamily homes, duplexes, 16 units per acre, and that goes to single-family homes under the new lower density, only three dwellings per acre, and I'm glad that you gave the history, because it wasn't too long ago when it was agricultural, and I've been, like I said, driving through there for over 40 years, and so I've seen it up front and close and weekly, the changes, and the growth came to there, and I hope when we vote on this that we pass that and help preserve something that is unique and special about Charleston County. I know many times we vote and we give special tax breaks to companies that come from other places, from out of the country, other states, and give tax breaks and tax refunds over time, and I think that people who have lived here for generations and the sweat and tears of the ancestors deserve consideration equally, and I think this would be such a thing. I hope we then do the right thing coming up with the FED, the Historic Preservation Commission. We had the programs, the Hees Cooper, we had a huge turnout there, and as I said, the whole purpose of it was to protect the community there from development, and as somebody who's been through there all the time, that, as I said and preached, is that's the next step where development comes from. It's built out there at Park West, Carolina Park, and Dunes West. This is the next area for development, and I hope that we put people in front of the development, that we should be here to represent the people that live here. And a lot of what we do is kind of like to try to reduce inflation by spending money. We keep on supercharging growth and development, and I think we owe it to the people, the quality of life, to sometimes think of what we're doing in that respect. So again, I'm glad that we voted for the parental leave. I think we did something, took another step for something historic and sacred that create bonds of parents and newborn children, and so I think that's another thing in the step in the right direction. And as I told Reverend Middleton, his prayer last meeting meant so much, because not every community is like this. I still, in San Francisco, they passed basically a resolution, you know, in favor of, in my opinion, rape and murder and Hamas, and we live in a different place, so thank you for that, and thank each and every one of you, and I look forward to this year.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Werman?
Very little today, Mr. Chairman, but I did want to just say, you know, obviously we're meeting today due to the storm that came through, and want to thank all of our county employees, from our administrator, Mr. Tooton, to all the department heads, Clerk's Office, everyone for their hard work every day, but especially, you know, in getting us through the challenges that we face, you know, when these types of conditions come in. in. I know that it requires a lot of extra work on everybody's behalf, and I just wanted to thank folks for doing that, and beyond that, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pryor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dittos to what Mr. Darby said and anybody else. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Boykin?
Nothing for me tonight, sir.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Yeah, just wanted to tag on to what Mr. Darby was saying. I've not been on council when it wasn't a single-member district, so I'm not sure what the history of that entailed. I do know that I think it is healthy to some degree that we have a focus on individual districts, and I know Councilman Boykin and I met with a group out in District 8 and 9 today, and that type of collaboration has been very helpful. And I know, just like in your district, Mr. Darby, and Mr. Pryor's, anytime I'm invited up into those areas, I'm always happy to come, and so I hope that we will continue the collaboration that brings, you know, the best to our community. So thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Tooten?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Ms. Hamm?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all for being here tonight. I'm glad everybody was safe. I think we, there's no question, we made the right call to move the meeting from Tuesday to tonight, and actually, Mr. Tooten and staff worked on that early, and so we didn't do it at the last minute. We got it with plenty of notice, and I think that was very important. I think that helped work, make things work, certainly helped things for our employees and for their families. And I agree, we do all collaborate with our own districts and with other people in different districts as well, but I look at it as it's our county. You know, it's our county, and we're responsible for all of it and everything that goes on with it, and I just think that's a tremendous responsibility, and I know this council takes it as seriously as I do, and I certainly appreciate that. Thank you all so much. Y'all have a great evening.
Hey, cut your hands, I mean.
No, man.
Absolutely, sir.
Yeah, I'm gonna go right quick.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.